You're the public, come on up. Good to see you again.
I've got a little statement to make. Two weeks ago on a Thursday while we were all sitting in here, what I understand there's another death at that intersection. So now it's getting to be every two weeks we get a death. Is anybody really moving on this thing?
Well, it's obviously a DOH issue, but I tell you what, when the meeting's over today, I will reach back out to them one more time and ask them to please.
Because at this point, as long as this has been going on, as long as the county's been aware of this, is this turning into a neglectful situation?
I can assure you, when you were here that afternoon, we spoke with DOH, Mr. Delia and I had met with them and explained, you know, the situation out there. And there are things coming, but it's two years away. That's not helping us today, so.
What would it cost actually for the county to put their money into it?
Well, see, we can't do that. We can't, we can't go out there and put signs on the roadway without the DOH allowing that to happen.
Is there someone that has enough power to talk to the governor about this?
You have enough power to talk to the governor.
Well, me as a person talking to the government and you as a county board talking to the governors will be through the situation.
About our local delegation and our senator, President of the Senate, we'll see, we'll reach out to him. I got his number, I'll call him too and let him know the concern.
Very concerned because I live three doors away from that intersection. But anybody that's in the county that goes in that direction should be concerned.
Yeah, the only thing that I could see that would be better at this point was at Warm Springs Road, put a red light.
Basically, that would relieve the intersection going railroad tracks for us. Warm Springs does seem to be on the 81 stretch, right? Rather than all this around the community. Get that left turn, no left turn sign, or even a right turn only sign. They even work better that way, actually. And get an officer out there once it's there for, you know, every two weeks to stop by and watch it. People start respecting.
I did notice the sheriff's not to change the subject, but he does have his new signage out on 81. And it's been very effective. It shows that then he looked three times when I saw the light start flashing, so maybe we can get him to move one of the signs out there a little bit.
So not to say. I know my phone, I went and sold my cellular, my phone's been crazy the last few seconds, so. I don't know if anybody's trying to contact me or not.
Yeah, I think everybody's cell phone, I had to switch from what I had to the new company. And I'm not getting calls and I'm getting dropped calls, so I think it's something going on with the whole cell system.
G4 LTE. You don't have the LTE in that G4, you're not getting service. What I understand is AT&amp;T's changing all their towers around. And that's where, you know, they're getting ready, I think Mobile T's getting ready to buy, but it's all your cell phone. So I guess they're all in a hizzy right now trying to make contracts on who gets time on the tower, you know? Yeah, I would appreciate that, you know, this all continue to stay at port.
Well, you're going to have to be dedicated and keep doing what you're doing. I've been working for over four years about the, the whole stretch of Exit 12, Apple Harvest Drive through 911 intersection into Queen Street. And I've been, I've been having conversations on a regular basis for four years and they just put that section out to bid a month ago. So it's not, and nothing happens.
If it's newsworthy, it's going to get some media attention.
Nothing, nothing happens overnight. That's for sure.
Threat or anything like that with the situation.
No, I don't, I don't think it is a threat. And we addressed it, so, but we will reach back out again.
I appreciate that. I'm sure that your relatives cross through that intersection occasionally. All right, appreciate it. Thanks for your help.
Good to see you again, thank you.
Can you state your name?
Thank you. Your name, please?
Oh, my name is Bruce Guones, I live at 136 Meadow Lane.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And you still have my number, right?
Okay, any other items from the public? Not a motion to approve the agenda?
So move. Second.
Mr. President, there is an amendment to the agenda, the 3 o'clock PM Board of Assessment Appeals hearing. That one has also been removed, so there will be no afternoon session.
Definitely, definitely amend the agenda to remove that.
Okay, we had the, heard the amendment, is there a motion to, I'm sorry, second to that amendment?
He's thinking about it.
All those in favor say aye? Like, sign opposed? All right, uh, next on the agenda is purchase order. Any questions for Tracy? We got off easy Tracy. I'd like to get you to come back up just for the heck of it, though. Uh, internal budget revisions, none today. Change in status, new hire recommendation received from Gary Wine, Deputy Clerk Administrator, Deputy County Administrator for the following. Michaela McDonough, is that right?
Yes, sir.
McDonough, okay. As an IT specialist one, with an annual salary of $47,776 effective October the 18th, 2021. Whitney Hieronymus as an IT coordinator with the annual salary of $37,509 effective October the 18th, 2021.
They coordinate IT stuff.
It's, um, it's the position that the council reinstated in Mr. Wine's budget. It's an administrative assistant, but they do some, some low level entry level IT.
Oh, that sounds like.
That's it.
She's here to, to rock my stuff.
Directly below, directly below Gary that was taking care of.
That's some of that issue, if you remember Gary spoke about a few weeks ago, that he had taken on a lot of those additional duties and he's getting a little overwhelmed.
This person will be doing the billing and some other things.
Which Gary was doing. Okay, I had a letter of resignation received from the prosecuting attorney's office for a Lindsay Hash effective November the 5th, 2021. Letter of resignation received from the day report center for Thomas Anderson effective October 22nd, 2021.
Just want to point out to the council, you know, we've made some, some great strides with their competitiveness in the, in the labor market with some adjustments that you've made. We still have problems competing with federal level, federal government, we've lost a number of employees to VA center. Lindsay Hash who has been with us for some time as a victim witness coordinator has actually been recruited away from us by the Department of Defense. So she had, again, we lost another really good employee to federal government. Nothing we can do about that.
Well, they see what kind of.
They do.
What kind of personnel we have and they, they know to look to us for.
They, they cherry pick.
Yep, can't blame them. All righty, uh, need approval of the minutes for September 30th and I was not present, so.
Mr. Vice President, I agree with September minutes of September 30th, 2021 in spite of you not being here.
And I will, I will agree with that.
In spite of me not being here? All those in favor say aye? Like, sign opposed? And one abstention for absence. Council calendars. Here we are. Uh, today's Thursday the 14th, we're meeting here in the Board of, Board of Assessment Appeals at 1 PM. Oh, it's been canceled, but no, we still.
No, sir.
Cancelled, okay.
We just made that amendment.
Yeah, you did. Or the, actually the, who was supposed to be in here was canceled. Uh, let's see, last. Commission calendars, fire board this evening at 6:30 here in the Chamber's office. Uh, for Monday the 18th, 4 PM Health, Health Board Martinsburg, uh, let's see, 4 PM EPTA. Main Street Martinsburg at 6, Planning Commission at 6. And also the Airport Authority at 6. On the 19th, they had 9 AM WRNR. Who's going to be on that one?
Well, I got it on my calendar, but I guess they just didn't want to publicize that.
Mr. Delia on WRNR. At 11:30 Parks and Rec, at 5 PM Sewer District, and 6 PM Stormwater District. 1:30 PM on the 20th, Wednesday is H-E-P-M-P-O. At 4 PM on Berkeley County Criminal Justice Board at 6, and Solid Waste Authority. Anything else?
Just a reminder to the council, tomorrow afternoon at 3 PM, we've been invited to the ribbon cutting for the Charles Taylor Memorial Playground.
So the Roundhouse Authority was not held yesterday. Uh, the meeting, apparently they had some trouble getting the posting out. So it is scheduled for next week and I'm not, I haven't seen that, but I've been told it's scheduled for next week. Maybe Tracy can find that out for me, verify.
All righty, um. Uh, cancel check request from the county clerk's office. We have, um, one, is that all? Cancel check?
Yes, sir.
And so, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Motion carries. Uh, correction of assessment laws, enforcement of assessment applications, deconsolidation applications and consolidation of properties. And the Honorable Mr. Hess, the three personal property tax exemptions for taxpayer error?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we have three taxpayer errors first thing here. Good to bring to your attention, so. They reported their vehicles and we had to mark their offenses taxpayer error. We got three of them, total of 537.
Mr. Vice President, I'm reading section three, taxpayer error, personal property tax exemptions, in the order of $537, all of 73.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Like, sign opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Got one officer, personal property, you had to make a mistake, you only keep your own vehicle. For $107.68.
Okay, motion to approve the officer. Second. All those in favor say aye? Like, sign opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, um, Board of Meeting Reports, Mr. Barnhart. Alright, um, board of meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
The only meeting I had scheduled was the board of districts. I was unable to attend because I was attending to Linda's car because I hit the parking lot. Did four thousand dollars damage and hadn't been towed.
Wow. Hit in a parking lot?
Yeah.
Sorry to hear that, but. Okay, Mr. Delia.
Well, it must have been all in the wheel. If it was only four thousand dollars, it had to be.
The back wheel and just went.
I was gonna say, because it couldn't have been much body damage.
No, very little body damage. Boy, it nailed that wheel.
Okay. She driving your truck now?
No, no.
Um, I did have a meeting, uh, yesterday, um, for the, uh, Development Authority. Doug's not here, his board, but I was there on the, uh, at the meeting and, um. Trying to think of what. Pretty much, pretty much, uh, it looks like there's a couple of projects that are about. Should, one should close this week, matter of fact, and, uh, and another one within the next couple of weeks should be making an announcement.
Any, any discussion or anymore, um, on the, uh. Waterway, their comment stream?
Actually, that all went on for bid and it was awarded. So I don't know where that's at right now, but it has been, that, that job has been awarded.
My neighbor asked me, and so I said, look, I hear any information on what I'm asking.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Um, extension of the Pike Side Water, were you talking about?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, I did have a, um, meeting that was yesterday was canceled for the Roundhouse because they didn't, uh, they didn't get the agenda posted in time and it's supposed to be next week. But I did attend a mixer for Main Street Martinsburg last night at the CBB. And, uh, had Miss West Virginia there and, uh. His team was there. It's a pretty neat building. It's a pretty neat building down there that, uh, the CBB occupies. They've got some neat things coming up too, so.
Good.
That's pretty much it. Mr. Coconut?
Yes, sir. At a subcommittee meeting with the planning commission, with staff and another member of the planning commission, Mr. Lewis, Tim Lewis. Sit down and started going through the comments for the rewrite. And a very productive meeting and won't take a while to get through all of that. So we have another meeting, I'm gonna try to schedule a meeting every other Tuesday after.
Good. Anything else? Uh, I have no meetings to report on either, so. Reappointment packets received from the following for LEPC. Their terms expire the thirteenth of November, twenty twenty one for Ron Stevens and Christina Johnson.
Jackson.
Jackson, I'm sorry, Jackson. Anything there to act on?
No, sir. I spoke with Tracy earlier and she would like to wait until all the applicants have seen her stuff.
Uh, ten fifteen, we're a little bit early?
If you want to do vehicles.
Yep, let's do, uh. Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
Um, as the council was aware, two weeks ago, uh, on September thirtieth, we opened bids for four non-emergency feet. Four non-emergency fleet vehicles, two compact SUVs and two midsize SUVs. As well as one law enforcement police pursuit pickup truck. We opened the bids, we, we read them in the records, um, we received four. There were five non-emergency vehicle bids and three law enforcement police pursuit pickup truck bids received. In your packet is a summary table of those bids. Um, the vehicle replacement committee reviewed the bids. All the bids were in order. They met the minimum qualifications as outlined in the RFP. Therefore, we would like to make, uh, the following bid recommendations, all based on the low bid received. For the compact SUV, which as I mentioned, there were two of them, we're recommending that we purchase two twenty twenty two Chevrolet Equinox LS, all wheel drive. From Whiteside of St. Clair, Ohio, uh, in the low bid amount of twenty three nine per vehicle. The midsize SUVs, again, two of those, uh, the twenty twenty two Ford Explorer, four wheel drive from Hickers Town Ford. It's mid, the low bid of twenty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars per vehicle.
There's two of those.
Two of those, yes, sir. And then the, um, the police interceptor vehicle, Ford is the only one that produces that vehicle. We received three of those bids for the F one fifty police responder vehicle. Recommending that that vehicle be purchased from Carson Ford of Martinsburg. Uh, in the low bid amount of thirty six thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. If approved, all of those vehicles would be, uh, the price included delivery to Martinsburg.
The outfitting, is that a separate bid or is that included?
Well, the outfitting is only with the pickup truck, um, and we are doing all that outfitting in-house now, so. Um, of course, there would be some, some equipment that may have to be ordered, but that would be separate from this bid.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the bid recommendation?
Motion, we accept the recommendation by Mr. Davis for the three separate vehicles, actually four separate vehicles, um, as outlined. Question.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. And Mr. Zai is here, so we're gonna move you right on up the, up the schedule here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Update on our programs. I'll start with home confinement program. We have eighty-three people currently under supervision, twenty pending cases. Um, I'll review the, the, uh, the numbers with this is starting, it's our fourth year. Um, time flies. It's our fourth year, uh, of managing home confinement program. In twenty eighteen, when we started, we received seventy five thousand, six hundred dollars in payments. Jail cost would have been, if not for this program, eight hundred and eight thousand dollars. Twenty nineteen, we received ninety nine thousand, eight hundred dollars in payments. Jail cost would have been one million, four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, we received seventy three thousand dollars in payments. Jail cost would have been one point nine million. And so far in twenty twenty one, we've received seventy five thousand dollars in payments. Jail cost, uh, as of now, would have been two thousand, two million, fifty seven thousand. So the program continues to be utilized by the courts. It continues to save a lot of money. It continues to allow people to serve their sentences in their homes and stay employed. So this program's worth, it's worth its weight in gold. It's going very well. We have, uh, five officers currently staffed. We have a six starting on, uh, Monday. And home confinement program's going very well. I really don't have a whole lot more to report other than that.
Questions about it?
You know, I, I, of course, attended the meeting that you had, your regional meeting, um, there, we talked a little bit. I was really amazed that, um, more county councils or commissions, um, aren't sponsoring and, and doing that program within the county than are. You know?
Think there's probably a lot of counties that are just always under this wave or keep them under this wave, kind of thing.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if, if you, you're relaying, I, I don't, I, it just makes sense to me to do what we're doing because it's a win for everybody. Everybody wins and, and that could happen in every county throughout the state. If they structured a program and the county was supporting the program to make it happen, um.
I agree with you.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, if you look at our numbers and we're in one of fifty-five counties. How, how much impact could that have throughout the state if every county was doing what we're doing?
Yes, sir. Day Report Center. Um, we're, we're continuing to do our thing. We, uh, uh, in the month of. I wrote the wrong month down. The number's right, uh, in the month of September, we served, I wrote down November for some reason. The month of September, we served two hundred and eighty-five, uh, participants. So our numbers remain strong at the Day Report Center.
Do you have a max?
Right now, we're staffed. We're staffed up to.
The max?
Three hundred and a couple.
I was saying, I thought it was three hundred.
Yeah. I've got some room to do a little bit. From January first, twenty twenty one through, through current year, we have conducted thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one drug screens. Three thousand sixteen of them were positive, nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven were negative. So twenty-six point seven percent of our drug screens conducted this calendar year to date, uh, were positive for some, some substance and seventy-three percent or so negative. Uh, Suboxone is our most commonly abused drug, although it's widely prescribed, it's, it's, um, widely abused because it's over prescribed. Uh, so one thousand, six hundred and seventy-two specimens were positive for non-prescribed Suboxone. One thousand, one hundred and seventy-one specimens positive for THC. Six hundred and twenty-four positive for fentanyl, two hundred and sixty positive for cocaine. Um, and the designers, uh, we tested five hundred and ninety-five specimens and, and out of those five hundred and ninety-five, one hundred and fifty-one were positive for these new designers. About twenty-five percent of all that we tested were positive. We don't test every specimen for those because it's expensive. We did, it would significantly increase our, uh, drug screen cost, so. Case managers and your coaches keep a close eye on all our participants and those that appear to, to be likely using that drug, and it's pretty obvious when they are. We, we test that. Just kind of have to.
These drugs are illegal and assholes or?
They're, they're illegal, but it's, it's, um, the drug screening, it, it's very difficult for, for the laboratories to keep up with these things. Because they're always changing chemicals. The most commonly abused chemical that's in this new stuff now is called nitalone. It's, it's a methamphetamine-like drug. Yeah.
I tell you, it's complicated.
It's, yes.
Sorry, crazy. Everybody that you're testing is not in your programs, is that correct?
The numbers that I just gave you are all enrolled in services at the Day Report Center. However, we do, we drug screen the HHR.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, we, we, um, pretty sure we're the only agency that the HHR has even in Martinsburg to send people who have active CPS cases. When they have an open CPS case, part of their improvement period is, is the drug screening. Um, and we drug screen those folks three times a week. So we have, I don't know, sixty or seventy of them right now with the drug screening. Those referrals just regularly come in. Our juvenile program, catalyst program, um, has, has officially launched. Our therapist and our youth care recovery coach started on Monday. Youth care recovery coach is actually one of our current care coaches that transitioned into that role. So we're going to start seeking referrals from the courts and begin to build that program. Very excited about that. So more to come on that down the road.
Is there a rapid response team going? Is that?
I'm, I'm getting our next recovery resource center, my next update. Um, yes, we're still, we're still doing our thing. Um, we've had some staffing changes there. I'll start with QRT since, since we're on that now. They started knocking on doors on October fifth, twenty twenty. They have, I'm sorry, October fourteenth, twenty twenty. They've knocked on four hundred and three doors now since they started. They have reached a hundred and sixty-nine of survivors, uh, and forty-five families. There have been forty percent of, of all survivors who they've come into contact with have accepted some sort of, uh, treatment. Um, so, so those numbers are staying very strong and I, and I continue to be surprised by that. I, I just really did not expect it, so it's been very good work.
So, so here's a question. Do your numbers include those that, um, that immediately want help? Um, or, or are those, are, are those, are the, is the forty percent, um, the ones that, um, that you respond to that, that did want help? And what I mean is if, if somebody has, if somebody has an overdose right now and, and the responder goes to that. And, and brings them back, revives them with, uh, Narcan, and they say they want help. Don't they have the ability at that point to take them somewhere right then to get help?
So, so EMS always asks them if they want to go to the hospital. They generally don't, don't go to the hospital, and here's why. When somebody's under the influence of fentanyl or opiates of some kind, heroin, life is wonderful. They're given Narcan after they've overdosed and Narcan puts them into a state of withdrawal. And the only thing that they can think about now is getting away from these people and get high again.
That's because they're in pain.
Withdrawal is not an option for heroin addicts. It's the worst sort of pain. It, it can't be described with words. It is suffering and torment and it lasts for days. Explosive diarrhea, vomiting and physical pain and discomfort. Mental, emotional ag- anguish. It's, it's very difficult to describe. It's nothing that anyone ever wants to experience. So when a person goes from being really high into, I'm in withdrawal right now, you all need to get away from me. I gotta go. That's why the quick response team is very effective twenty-four to forty-eight hours later because once they, usually they go get high again. That's just how, how it goes. But they know, they know, I just almost died from this. And they, they don't want, this isn't what they want to continue doing, so the quick response team goes and knocks on that door when they're, when they're fresh and that experience is still rushing their mind. And they go, hey, this is who we are and we're here, we're here to help you. If you're ready, we can make it happen right now. And roughly four out of ten of them are saying, I'm ready.
So, so you, you still didn't answer my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There is a percentage of those individuals that say they do want help right then.
Yeah.
And does, does your?
I don't, I don't have, I, I see what you're asking.
Do they, do they relay that? When they relay the messages or when they relay the addresses or the individual that they treated? Do they relay that that person wants help right now or does that person find help somewhere else?
So if, if they're willing to go to the hospital right then, EMS transports them to the hospital and then the hospital has three different expert providers that are, that are staffed around the clock. That will facilitate them getting into a program.
Okay.
And if that happens, they're not there for the, for the QRT to, the QRT still goes and knocks on the door, tries to engage with their family.
Okay.
But they're gone, but that doesn't happen very.
Right, I understand.
That might be one out of, I don't have those numbers. That might be one out of twenty, you know?
You, you know, you talked a little bit about the misuse of Suboxone a little bit ago and you were very, uh, um, very easy on, um, you know, over prediction. Or over prescribing. The, uh, I, I'm gonna say it again. I've said it before, you know, and, and I believe my numbers are correct. I believe that a doctor in his first year can only prescribe to thirty patients, um, in the first year and then after that, he can prescribe up to a hundred patients. But the maximum dose, if I're, if I'm correct, I believe is sixteen milligrams. And four milligrams is all it takes to keep the monkey off the back. And so we have enormous amount of doctors prescribing the maximum dose and those doses get abused all the time. But yet, we won't give the doctors any more patients. And, and, and the doctors have been, medical profession has been trying to get more patients up to, I think it's four hundred that you can get if you're, um, doing methadone. And they've tried to get that increased. The way to solve that problem is instead of regulating the patients, is to regulate the amount prescribed. Because if a doctor was, was, and what they're stuck with right now is the maximum they can prescribe is sixteen hundred milligrams. Sixteen hundred milligrams a day, which would equal maximum dose by a hundred patients. If they were to, if they were to take that sixteen hundred milligrams and make that the limit without worrying about the patients, those doctors could. those doctors could solve the problem for four hundred patients and prescribe them the correct dose.
And minimize the number, the number of strips they're floating around.
Minimize the excess prescribed. I don't know why we're not doing it. It's not that, it's not rocket science.
Yeah, and part of the problem also is that this drug has become another way pharmaceutical companies have made money. They, suboxone went originally, now back in the late nineties, early two thousands, it was for, only for long-term IV drug users. Multiple failed treatment attempts, they've been using heroin for many, many years, nothing they've done is tried. All right, let's give you this, let's give you this drug, but it's gonna be very closely monitored. In fact, we're not even gonna get it to you to take home and give to the court.
Is it clinically?
Yeah, just like methadone. And now it's become, we want to give everyone suboxone, we want to give them way more than they need. And it's, you can't. Addiction, addictive drugs should not be used to treat addiction in general. That's just my opinion there, I'm not a physician, that's my opinion though.
Well, I understand the process of trying to bring somebody down off of an addiction in a period of time so that they're, you know, not everybody can handle the withdrawals and the pains that come with that. But I can get that part of it where they're going to use to wean somebody off of heroin under a clinical, under a clinical oversight. But I don't get the part where you just give them and give them, give them.
That withdrawal, though, is a big part of the reason that it makes people want to get away from this. And if they never have to experience that because they have a drug, their reason for stopping decreases. It's not as strong. Because I can suboxone, and I can stay healthy and not be sick.
That's not true though. That's not true. I mean, suboxone is a very, it's a terrible drug. It's a terrible drug. I mean, if you.
No, I mean, I mean, if it's that dirt, if they have it available to them, they don't have to fear withdrawal because they always have suboxone to fall back on.
Right, right. But it'll, I mean, it's, it has enormous amounts side effects.
You mean if they're using it regularly?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the suboxone withdrawal is no different than heroin withdrawal. In fact, some would say it's worse. Methadone withdrawal being, being b worse, so. It's a problem. It's a problem. So that's QRT, they're still doing their thing. Recovery Resource Center's got ninety people in the treatment this calendar year so far. Thirty-nine into a detox program, thirty-seven into an outpatient program, fourteen into an MAT program. They've conducted a hundred and eight Narcan trainings. There are twelve recovery meetings that are happening on a weekly basis at the RRC. And they're doing good work. Katie Morgan is the new Recovery Services Coordinator. She's fantastic. She's done a really good job. And she's actually extended the hours down there, that the door is open. She has, there's a couple groups that have been added since she came in to increase their hours. She's done a really good job. Very impressive.
Early in the morning too.
Yes.
Some mornings, six-thirty, seven o'clock.
Yes.
They have the lights on, there's someone there.
So Tim, when this team goes, how many people are on this team?
The QRT?
Three. Three. So there's always three folks that go to these houses?
Yeah.
I assume once somebody put in a bad situation where, you know, one person goes to the house and?
No, they don't do that.
No good.
They would never go one person. They may go two sometimes, if someone's out or.
Sure.
Never one. Yep. Joe Tipp program is continuing to do very well. This school year since they've started, they're in Martinsburg and Hedgesville now. They spend two days in Martinsburg High and two days in Hedgesville High. They are, they have conducted to, since school started in August, they've done thirty-two groups at both schools. And their average, they've averaged about three hundred and thirty kids that they've seen now that they facilitated this curriculum with. And they're making a lot of good connections there. The staff seem to really be impressed with them. They have different teachers and coaches that are throwing out a great way to connect them and serve the students. So a lot of good results that are continuing through that program. So the juvenile program in general, we're gonna begin to grow here. I'm looking forward to seeing how that's gonna unfold. I know prosecutors have told me, we can send you a lot of kids right now, who are gonna have to stage it though, of course. There's some, HIDA wants us to lock down a couple of, there's a couple of assessment tools that they want the staff to be trained in that they're gonna use to be able to measure long-term results. I have a meeting with them tomorrow to try and lock some of those assessments down. So as soon as that's locked down, probably starting Monday, I'm gonna let the prosecutors know we're ready. Maybe they'll send, maybe we'll start with five, send five kids over and get them to go back and build a case load of juveniles.
Are your team that you have currently in Martinsburg and Hedgesville, will they at some point rotate and go to Spring Mills and Musselman?
Musselman, for whatever the reason, is not interested. They've, we've reached out to Musselman on a couple of occasions and offered this, and they're like, no, we're good. I don't understand that. But they've kind of given us a stiff line. Spring Mills, they will rotate into, but probably not till next month.
So that decision made up by the principal or by the school board?
I don't think the school board's involved in that. I think it's up to the individual principals. At Musselman, it's a vice principal that they've been directed to talk to, and it's just, without really giving a reason. We don't need you to have a question. Yeah. Maybe it's gonna take the right connection, I don't know. Hasn't happened yet.
How is the modification of the old building part?
The, as you know, the roof, soffit, fascia, gutter, and downspouts are completed. There was some delay only because they removed the interior non-load-bearing wall of the, I call it that, the core of the classrooms that we moved in some time ago. We had put the wall in, we have to take it back out. That's been removed, and we had to order carpet squares so that we could match everything up. There was a little bit of delay getting the carpet squares in. Long story, short recovery resources should be down at eight hundred by the end of the month.
And what moves in there, just Recovery Resource Center, because you mentioned a couple other groups, I didn't know where they were housed.
So Joe Tipp, Joe Tipp staff and QRT staff are under the Resource Center, so they're all. They're all moved down there. That modular, first modular on the left is what Alan's talking about, that they opened up. It's just one large space, and that's where you have large meetings in there. I mean, there's a couple of groups that meet down at the Resource Center. There's thirty people sometime that show up for those meetings, so we need to figure everything out, and that'll work perfectly.
And by using the outbuildings, because they're having recovered groups at night and on weekends, we can find whoever's in charge of the group and actually give them an access key just to that building so that there will always be staff there, but that way it gives them, if they want to get there early, have coffee and stuff like that set up that we do.
One more thing I'll share with you. The, recall the fundraiser that Rosedale Cemetery did? They donated money to us, you all actually donated some money. We used that money to have an event at Warner Memorial Park this past Saturday.
Seen it on Facebook. I've seen it on Facebook.
Yeah. We did a lot of planning for it, and it ended up, we were a little nervous about the weather. They were calling for rain for quite a bit of the week, but it ended up being fine. It didn't rain at all. And it came up really well. There were just shy of three hundred people that attended. Mount near Meats was there, the Kona Ice Truck was there. We gave away five hundred hot dogs, the staff cooked. Lady Jack's Grill, he brought his grill there. We had a couple of bouncy houses that we rented from Jefferson Rentals. A lot of local businesses donated gift certificates and items that we raffled off. There were a number of recovery stories that happened, but I don't know if any of you saw the newspaper yesterday. Crystal Peterson is our peer recovery coach supervisor. And about three years ago, she overdosed, and county EMS responded. And the girl that actually administered Narcan, her name is Samantha Dixon, she still works for EMS. And I got her contact information from Chad and called her and said, hey, are you willing to come here on this date at this time? And she and Crystal got to meet face-to-face for the first time. Crystal's parents were there, and it was very meaningful, especially, I mean, particularly for Crystal, but her parents and her family. She was in the middle of, she was in the process of dying, like she was going to die if not for that dose of Narcan that was given to reverse the effects of that overdose. And so we talked a little bit about overdose and Narcan at the event, and then I had the two of them come up and meet and they're actually gonna get together for lunch this week. But that was neat. That was a neat thing to do. And it was a pretty awesome event, and it came off really well. Hopefully, it's gonna be an annual event. Rosedale Cemetery has indicated if they want to do another walk to raise funds again in the spring, they're gonna make the money to us again, and then we'll have another event. Hopefully, we can make it an annual event.
What's happening in the session that you're highlighting people? See social media, like your coaches will be, and things like that.
That was Katie's idea. Katie's investment. Yeah. Yeah.
People get lucky, Stephanie Stout.
Stephanie Stout, as you know, she resigned as the, her research coordinator several months ago. She got a position as a state representative for Banyan Treatment Centers. She's also, in addition to that now, the regional representative for the West Virginia Office of Drug Control Policy. And she's, she was looking for office space for that position. So I spoke with Alan, and we're gonna provide her office space at the Resource Center. You know, for her to be connected to that agency will be very helpful in a number of ways to do our efforts up here. So that's a good thing.
It is, and it's another opportunity for partners, you know, to collaborate and do the work that you're doing. It just, you gotta work together, you know? I mean, you could probably charge a state of office fee, but that's counterproductive, you know? So, you know, just keep looking for those opportunities to work together. That's, I get the concern sometimes, but agencies absolutely refuse to work together. And we've got to figure this out together.
When Tim contacted me about it, we couldn't think of any reason not to do it. You know, it was an win-win for everybody to have that state connection there. And this isn't the first time we've offered state employees or state agencies an opportunity to partner with us. This is the first time that someone's really taken advantage of it.
I know the Farm Marshal's Office have worked with the Sheriff's Office.
Right.
Couple of years ago, they're still there and operating.
We had offered years ago, they offered Secretary State decide over the satellite officer, if you remember, the council offered office space in this building. And they, they're in the old.
Train station.
The train station. But we did offer them an opportunity to relocate here.
It just improves that relationship, and that's what it does.
Stephanie lost her dad last week. So that's very sad for her. The funeral is Monday, Brown's funeral home in Pinewood, eleven o'clock.
Tim, I want to thank you, you know, and I say this all the time, but, you know, as I sit here reflecting on all this that you've said, and I've been, we've been together since the, since the beginning here with the county, your employment and, and before. And I hope it feels good to be Tim these days because you've done, you've done a lot for your community, a lot. I mean, if you reflect on all these numbers that you're looking at, and I know you didn't do it all, and you got a great team that you work with, but there's a captain of a ship that takes the ship in the right direction for success, and you've been, you've been doing a great job at that. So I hope, I hope when you have time to, and I don't know where you'd have time, but be able to sit and reflect on all these numbers that you're telling us. I hope you realize the impact that you've made on this community.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm tickled to be able to, I'm humbled to be able to do this. I mean, this is, this is where my addiction birthed. And for me to be able to have an opportunity that you all have given to me to do this kind of work and to try and influence good things in Martinsburg and Berkeley County to help these folks that are suffering very important for me. I'm grateful for that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, we're a little bit early, and I see that Mr. Martin's here. If y'all don't need a break, we're gonna just.
Always good to talk to.
Yes, it is. Give us extra time to discuss all the good stuff. Welcome again, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure to see you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. As you all know, I have been nominated by Councilman Gokenhour to serve on the Franklin County Star Commission, Youth Commission. I consider it an honor and a pleasure. As you all know, I am probably more than needed in my interest in the history of this county, in particular the preservation of all the wonderful history of this county. As you all know, I live in a house that was built in seventeen seventy-five, and my wife and I spent forty-two years restoring it. We've got another project that we're ready to start this week. Seems like it never ends. And of course, I was here before because I was reappointed by, thanks to you all, obviously, and I appreciate it for the roundhouse. I've dedicated a substantial amount of my time, as well as the resources that I offer, to restoring the roundhouse and preserving it. So this is something that I have a passion for, and I'm certainly more than willing to answer any questions that you might have. I would tell Councilman Gokenhour, I was hoping to bring you a picture of me, I thought you might be interested in it. I had a picture at the market house back when it had the clock tower. But then when it also had the tower on the back of it, with the bell, it was the back of the fire station. I thought you might be interested in it. Maybe one day, we might be able to actually at least get the clock tower back on, not the bell tower. That's in the future, and maybe for another generation.
Is that bell down at the firehouse?
No, but I understand that the livery station, livery, I don't know what it's called, the livery was across the street where the old cab stand was. That's where the horses were kept.
Well, when my office was, my father's office is on Holly Street, there was a stable across the street in your old apartment. It was down here many years ago.
They had two horses back in that day, and Grandpa and Monkey, that was their names. And they were currently buried out near the mall, out off of Mall Drive.
I'm also working as a affiliate of the Perk Geniuses Society, a number of different projects, and I have actually donated over a file cabinet, genealogical materials, and I'm very, I'm actually an incredible, not just historian, genealogist. They have, she had files, not just on my family, silver family, their relatives, but also almost every family in the county. A wonderful resource, and it ought to be where people can have more interest in their history and their family system.
Could almost be our own little Ellis Island, man.
You're right.
I spoke to Mr. Funkhauser yesterday, and he said that he's been in contact with you.
He has. I attended one meeting on the commission, the council was there. There was a question that came up, I mean, obviously, my license, my law license is inactive, and so I can't practice law. But he at least tried to, I was able to at least point him in some directions, I think, based on my forty-seven years' experience practicing law. I would never presume to give advice, but they can certainly utilize whatever my poor brain cells might remember.
I think they remember a good bit.
Probably forgotten more than I remember.
One of my favorite sayings is, is out of all the things I've lost, I miss my mind the most, so.
Yeah, amen. Yeah, amen.
Mr. Barnhart, do you have any questions you'd like to enter?
Are you enjoying your retirement?
I am.
I mean, you seem to be busy and wanting to get busier.
Well, you know what they say, as soon as you retire, you find out how really busy you can be, but you're a whole lot busier than you were before you retired. And that's pretty much true.
I don't know much about what the Landmarks Commission does, but I assume you've got, you're ready to jump right in with both feet and give them whatever help they need.
I am. And one of the things that came up was, one, I actually got started months ago in the middle of COVID with Mr. Funkhauser with regard to transferring information in hundreds of black graveyard that we have in the county. They're actually getting a deep look at page where they were created into the database. They already have a number of books out like that, but lists aren't different. But they're now trying to get the information, it's on microfiche, over into their database. One of the most interesting things about that for me was that microfiche database, all the deeds and everything that's going on, was actually put together by Michael Frank, the county surveyor and engineer, so we got to reach out, touch a little bit of Michael Frank. And it just kind of grew from there. We had a question come up about one of the graveyards when I attended a meeting about it and another one's come up about what happens when, like the Methodist church in this incident was closing a church in back of the valley, but what has a graveyard? There's what we call a residuary clause in the deed that says it goes back to the original donors of that land if the church ever becomes inactive. Who are they? West Virginia unfortunately doesn't have much statutory deals with how you handle the seniors, returning town, filing a quickly lawsuit, trying to determine who they are and if they want. A lot of interesting things, both historically as well as legally to me.
Mr. Martin.
That doesn't sound like a bad thing. I mean, if there's not a bunch of rules that guide you, how can you be wrong, right?
The problem is you've got the graves, you've got people in the graves. And unfortunately, there's no statute that says what you do when the church becomes inactive. And that's quite frankly a whole of COVID risk for you because they obviously were interred here by loved ones and that should be protected and their bodies should be protected and there's some ones appropriate.
Well, the, I'm actually pleased that you decided to move back here to come back to Martinsburg and get more involved in what you're doing.
Thank you.
You know, it's, it sounds like you have a lot to offer and I appreciate what you're doing on the roundhouse.
Thank you. I don't know much, how much I have to offer, but I'm willing to certainly offer it for whatever purpose, you or anybody else.
Thank you.
Stay busy, stay on my wife's.
Mr. Gokenhour, you have anything?
Well, as Councilman Barnhart mentioned a while ago, he is already needy in his assistance with landmarks and the cemetery is really a big deal, especially with the development that's going on in the county. Some parcels are being purchased that originally had some, you know, small family grave plots on them. Some are deeded, some are not, and those type of things, they need to be protected. And so Mr. Martin has already contributed greatly with his expertise and knowledge in some direction where to hit some of this. But I think it's a great thread between historic landmarks and the BNO roundhouse. You know, I think that those, those two entities, they don't interact enough and I think that they need to come together for both of the agency's well-being. So I look forward to being able to work with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Martin, I don't have anything to say other than thank you for coming in and wanting to give your, your knowledge back to the county.
Thank you.
And I got to ask you this question at your home in your remodeling and preserving, have you ever found anything interesting there?
I found, it's terrible to admit this, of course, it didn't have anything to do with us, but the area over kitchens, where the house is. And when we took the ceiling out of the kitchen, because the original ceiling wasn't there, and actually the first weekend we were there, we did two things. Tore out that ceiling, walk-in fireplace. We were going to open that, so we took two rows of brick out and over the years it had filled up entirely with whatever kind of debris had come down the tube. The chimney was something, when they lined it, they actually had already hired a brush to set the liners, that's how they do it. But when the ceiling came out, it was funny, I covered myself and had the foot, except goggles and a respirer. When I finished, I looked like I just came out of a coma. I was black and had the foot. But back to your question, we found an old pair of Ben Franklin glasses and a broken glass top from a hurricane. We have found in some places different pieces of broken china. But unfortunately, they didn't hide the treasure that we located in there, anything else of any significance as we've done it all down. They cleaned it out pretty well.
Sounds like you already have the treasure.
We do, the house. Very blessed and very fortunate to have. And my wife was a history major in college. I was an English major, but I loved history so much, I actually had twice as many history credits as I did English credits. You get two historians together in a house like that, we've had a few. And actually, obviously, it was my great aunt or my aunt's.
Files.
Great aunt. I was actually to trace the family back to the fellow Pendleton who built the house. There's a blood relationship through a series of marriages, I found out about six months ago. I'm actually related by about four different iterations of marriages to different families like the Hunters. But I'm actually related by marriage to the Pendletons. You can't know this stuff, you know? It's just absolutely incredible what you find when you really dig into it.
Anybody, anything else? Mr. Martin, it's always a pleasure and please come back and visit anytime you want to and if you find anything interesting, please let us know about it. We'd love to hear it.
I'll be sure to let you know. You ought to go look at the files, you'll probably find all sorts of interesting stuff.
Speak, you mentioned about a pair of Ben Franklin glasses. Well, my grandfather was an optometrist here in town for many years and it was over my dad's house two days ago and I happened to see an old, old briefcase. And when I opened it up, it was my grandfather's briefcase that he traveled over the state of West Virginia and did eye exams with, and there was a pair of very old glasses in there that he took with him.
That's amazing.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of old stuff in there that he had, so.
Actually, my car is full of the last load of those files that I'm taking down to the Historical Society. These files were family files that I wanted to read over and look through before. Gave them to the Historical Society and Todd and I have been trying to get them. Those offices have been running here and there. At some point in time, it was this week, next week, we deliver the final load of files and memorabilia. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for nominating me. I appreciate it. I'm very honored and humbled by it and hopefully with your approval, we continue to do whatever I can.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Gokenhour this, is there any reason why we can't make the appointment?
No reason, I was sitting here contemplating that, but as long as it's true of the protocol.
Now, that's.
Make the move.
Make the move.
Make the motion, we accept Mr. Martin's appointment to the Landmarks Commission.
Second?
Tag it.
All those in favor?
Is this a full term? Is this replacement of the term?
I don't know, but Tracy will figure that out.
I think it's a full term.
Full term.
If not, I'll be back sitting rather than.
Okay. As I said, it's always a pleasure. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I'm very honored.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin will prepare the letter for the clerk's office and then Tracy can.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody need a break or are we good?
Yeah, we may have some others coming in.
Okay. All right. We'll take a short break. Thank you.
Good to see you.
It's Brooks and Chrislip, is that correct? Director of Business and Development, West Virginia American Water. Discussion regarding the water and sewer systems.
You nailed it, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you all?
So far, so good today.
Good, I'm Brooks Chrislip. I'm the Director of Business Development with West Virginia American Water. So, nice to meet everyone, glad to see everybody, and thanks for a few minutes of time this morning. I don't love giving presentations, happy to do them, but to the degree we have conversation, please feel free to interrupt, and I don't love listening to people as I talk to you, it's my life, so just relax, we can have a brief, please. Feel free to interrupt if you have questions, we kind of talked through here. To my left is Jake Lance, he's our Manager of Business Development. I will swap your ear with Justin in a moment, he'll share a couple things with you. First thing I wanted to do is just kind of introduce ourselves and tell you a little about what we do, and then talk a little bit about what we'd be interested in talking about, either short term or long term here in the Eastern Panhandle, particularly in Birmingham County. So, West Virginia American Water is the largest private water company in the state. We provide water services and wastewater services to about 550,000 customers throughout the state, so around 30% of the population. We're headquartered in Charleston. We serve the areas of Charleston, Huntington, Webster Springs, Weston, Lukefield, Princeton, handful of other communities kind of scattered in those areas, but that's where our general kind of population base is. The parent company is American Water, they're headquartered in Camden, New Jersey, which is right across the river from Philadelphia. We are in 46 states as American Water, providing water and wastewater services to military bases in addition to regulatory services that like we do here in West Virginia. We've got about 300-plus employees here in West Virginia, we've got about 6,800 nationwide. So, pretty big, vast network of resources and kind of resources to pull from as we do things here in West Virginia. Really what we want to talk about today was not only who we are, but what we can do and what we're looking to do. We'll kind of get into that here in just a moment. Historically, what we've done, we've got our base operations, and we've typically acquired and added systems to our footprint that were generally distressed. We just acquired the towns of East Bank, Glasgow, and Cedar Grove there along the Canal River, all three of which were very distressed communities and really were more of a bailout situation. The legislature changed the code here in June of 2020, Senate Bill 551 changed a couple things. One, what we do internally as a company and how we're able to value systems. Two, what those counties or municipalities are able to do with any proceeds from a potential sale. So, that's kind of what we want to talk about on the back end here. I'm going to pause for just a second first and see if there's any questions, Jake's going to come up with a couple of different ideas, if there's any questions on that I've said already, otherwise we'll circle back. All right, Jake, you want to take the...
Yes. Morning, everyone. Yeah, my name is Jake Lance, I'm with American Water, been with the company for about three years now, and I'm sorry if my phone starts blowing up, my wife is sending me a video and pictures, my son crawled today for the first time. He went four feet, so, a big day, it's a big day at our house, so I'm excited about that. But anyway, as Brooks said, we do have a lot of operations in West Virginia. We are mostly in the Charleston-Huntington area. If you guys have been to Charleston, our plant is right there. Our, if you guys have been to Charleston, our plant is right there off the interstate when you come around the big turn to head north. The kind of the interesting thing about where we are in the southern part of the state, ninety-nine percent of our source water is surface water and that's very different from the situation in the Eastern Panhandle, a lot of it is groundwater and wells. So, our sources are Elk River, Ohio River, there's some dams in the southern part of the state in Bluefield and Princeton and that kind of gives you an idea of where our source water is and how we treat our water. We have eight treatment plants around the state. Our average daily production is about fifty million gallons, so we treat a lot of water, we sell a lot of water, we sell water not just to our customers, but we have a lot of self resale agreements as well around the state where we take care of PSDs through public-private partnerships as well. As we said, very big system, very big company, but that means we have a lot of resources to draw on, not just in West Virginia, but one thing that Brooks did leave out is our regional headquarters is in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. We have a lot of operations in Pennsylvania as well, so if there ever is a time where we have to draw resources, not just from other parts of West Virginia, we can draw resources from Pennsylvania as well. And what's in Pennsylvania, I believe we serve about twenty percent of the population in Pennsylvania. In addition to what we do on the water side, we have a lot of programs for our customers and especially whenever we see things these days where times are tough and we have people who are struggling. So, we have a lot of programs to help those people out. One of them is our reduced rate, which is a twenty percent discount on our rate. We also have the Dollar Energy Fund and so that's how we help out our customers if they are having trouble with their bills. And not just our customers, the communities that we serve, we are very active in helping our communities. We just recently went through our applications for bottle filling stations where we will pay to put a bottle filling station in a community center or school. There's one that is going to be at a state park where you just walk up with your water bottle, fill your bottle up and there's no trash, it's just a fill your bottle up and go on the way. We do firefighting support grants to help firefighters around the state. We do community events where we have our H2O on the go truck, which basically goes around and helps kids understand the water cycle and why it is so important to protect our water sources and the importance of staying hydrated, those kinds of things. So, not just things that we do to help our customers, but also to help the communities that we are in. So, that's what I have to tell you, if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to take those even if I sit back down and Brooks is up here. If you have any questions about the operations side, Brooks can answer more of the questions on the acquisition, the process of that, but if there's any questions about the operations that we have, I'm more than happy to answer that question. So, I will pass the mic to Brooks.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it. Okay, again, appreciate you just humoring us, I know that's a lot of information we kind of know that quickly, but I wanted to just give another review of who we are, so that's who we are. So, what are we doing here is probably the next question. So, as we touched on a little bit, one of the things we're able to do now and that we're looking at across the state is the ability to make acquisition offers to municipalities and public service districts on the water and wastewater side. We have the ability to really value those systems based on what they're worth now and then those proceeds go, in this case, we were talking about the Berkeley PSD, those proceeds would go to the commission and they can distribute as they see fit. What that would look like practically speaking is when we make an acquisition, we're not bringing a bunch of things in, we're acquiring what's here, working with what's here. Employees would basically change shirts, they would no longer work for the Berkeley PSD, they work for West Virginia American Water and the benefits to go with. And then that service would still be continued to be provided throughout the county as it is now, it's just no longer a thing that the county needs to dedicate resources to, we dedicate our resources to it and the county is able to free them up to maybe direct some resources in another place. Another thing we do with when we, in those type of situations, is lots of times a public service district will continue to exist because no one's going to know not only the system better than the folks who work it, no one's going to know where growth is necessary in an area better than the folks who are here already. So, that board will continue to exist and we do public-private partnerships, lots of times grant funding is involved and we put in some matching funds. That way, the public service district of the county has the ability to kind of dictate, here's where we want to grow, here's where we need more development, we need a line of extension over here, all those sort of different scenarios to make sure that the system is operated and run in a way that is conducive and in line with what the county wants to achieve going forward.
Have you researched into Burke County PSD and the Burke County Water District?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end.
Have you researched into workings of...
Yes, yes, yeah, it's a big complex system, looks like it's a combination of, kind of conglomeration of PSDs over the course of time, but yeah, there's a lot of plants, a lot of activity, a lot of different things kind of spread out all over the county, so it is a unique animal in the state of West Virginia.
Well, and the Water District is seriously involved in...
Yes.
A lot of work.
Yes, absolutely.
And would you continue that?
Yes, yeah, so when we come in and there's projects ongoing, we work with the municipality or the county to make sure those are finished. We also, and again, everything's negotiable on these type of things, but certainly if there's projects that we don't have started yet or haven't received grant funding for, but we want to make sure it gets done here, it's part of our five, ten year plan or whatever, we certainly work those in and are happy to continue to do that. Any projects that are going on now, those would absolutely be seen to fruition, whether it's a one-year project or a thirty-five year project.
Have you talked to the city of Martinsburg about their system?
We've talked to Martinsburg briefly, we, you know, when the mayor transitioned here not too long ago, so we spoke with the mayor a few months ago, but yeah, that's another conversation we're looking to have here in the coming months.
So, I'm assuming you guys are a for-profit company, right?
Correct, correct.
What kind of profits did your company make last year?
Yeah, I don't know at the corporate level or at the state level, but yeah, we are heavily, we are regulated by the Public Service Commission just like any other water provider in the state. So, any dollar we make has to be approved by the Public Service Commission. We have a rate case that's pending now, we're required to every three years and provide a rate information to the Public Service Commission, which they think it's essentially like a trial on those and got to go through all the details of that. We spent two hundred fifty-two million dollars invested in our system over the last, just since our last rate case three years ago, so.
So, how could you, how could you compete with a, the current nonprofit company that we have, obviously, the Public Service Commission that we have operating service here? How could you compete and keep rates at similar costs as them when they're not operating as a for-profit company?
Correct, and that's one of the challenges we face is that because we're a private entity, we don't have the ability to utilize public funds for any of our investments. We have to do that with money that we brought in, that gets reinvested. So, what happens is our rates tend to be a little bit higher, they're not the highest in the state, but they're higher than most because of that, because we don't have the ability to use that grant money. So, that's a challenge and that's certainly a thing that we face, that the cost of providing water and wastewater service in West Virginia is difficult largely because you guys look here, you know, it looks like there's a lot of up and downs, you've got to pump water up hills, you've got to pump it back, slow it back down, so there's a lot that goes into it. Yeah, the rates are what they are and that's just...
So, what's the benefits to taxpayers here in Burke County of you purchasing this water system here?
Yeah, so the first thing I would say would be from the county level and that would be, that's kind of the story that the county or the city, whoever we may be talking to would know better. What are the needs? Where are there resources that are needed, where is there an opportunity to kind of divert some things because, you know, whether it's at a city level, if they want to build a new police station or tear down some dilapidated buildings or invest in firefighting equipment, anything along those lines. The county has even less restrictions with how they can spend money. So, if we were to make an acquisition, the first benefit is financially, we had that ability to pay, you know, for a system this size, it would be, for water and wastewater both, they could be anywhere a hundred, two hundred, three hundred million dollars. I don't know, we haven't looked into it at depth yet, but a lot of money, so there's a lot of things the county can do with that. Secondly, I think when we talked a little bit earlier about the resources we have, we've got three hundred folks here in West Virginia, seventy-five of our employees are water operators, licensed certified water operators. So, to the degree there's any, every time for needing to share resources, we've got that not only across the state, but as Jake touched on, all over the country. We've got vast resources in Pennsylvania, so we've got expertise that we can bring in, we've got extra bodies we can bring in, we've got capital, we've got infrastructure and things we can invest in, we have the ability to do that by having that big corporation is kind of, that's the plus side of it, is the ability to do some of those things.
So, if I'm a customer of Burke County Water District and I got a problem, do I call Charleston or do I still deal with Martinsburg?
We would, there'd be folks here locally, absolutely. We have a northern, southern, central, eastern, or western operations center, we do not have an eastern operations center, so if we were to acquire Berkeley PSD or another system in the area, we would open up an office here, we would have a place for people to walk in and pay a bill in person, we'd have people they could call on the phone. But the benefit also is we have a twenty-four hour line that people can call, customer service at any day, at any time, anywhere in the country. So, that's another benefit, they can get online, they can do it, call the eight hundred number, they can do it locally here, so it would, that's an extra benefit in that we have those extra options. Yeah, that would certainly, in addition to hiring all the employees that are currently here, we would certainly open up an eastern operations center that would be here because it doesn't make sense, as you kind of touched on, we can't operate this system in Charleston by any stretch, this system is here and has to operate here.
Totally isolated.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, so that would be, the intent would be to have a whole new operations center here in Burke County. And we're taxable too, so that's another, that's another, you know, we're another entity, you can't tax yourself, you can certainly tax us. What other questions we have on any of those things?
I was just kind of wondering, maybe to pick up where Councilman Delia was going. You jumped across the entire state basically to get to us, what's the attraction here?
Well, it's a different atmosphere than the rest of the state and y'all know that because you live here. We have, we have, population decline is an issue that we have for lots of parts of the state and that's not really the story in the Eastern Panhandle, it's right, and it's, we've got a lot of growth and it's where do we put it? There's no secret that the Eastern Panhandle is kind of the economic driver and the population center for the state movement board, we want to be part of that. We don't look at any acquisition or anytime we go to a community, we don't look at it as, we don't want to acquire that and then bring it to us, we want to go to them, so we want to be, this is the place we want to be, it's the part of the state we want to be a part of. It's something we now have the ability with our corporate mindset coupled with the helpful legislation we have to do some of this out there to help.
I know that a number of years ago, there was some contamination in Charleston, was that your water system?
It was, and that was, the Freedom Industries issue happened, what was that, was that ten years ago now? Seven years ago? Yeah, that was an upstream contaminant, there was a leak in a tank and it got into our source water, no notification was given and it was not something that anyone in the country tested for, it was a very unfortunate situation that the water got contaminated. We now have one of the few operations in the country as a, just basically a floating, I'm going to dump it down a little bit, but it's basically a floating computer that sits upstream to test for thousands of things that no one else in the country tests for, just for those very type of situations. Plus, we lobbied at the legislature to have storage tank legislation passed that puts a lot stricter regulations on what's in those things that are near any type of danger.
I'm assuming your rates would also be subject to the Public Service Commission?
Correct, correct, yes. We have a statewide tariff and that is approved by the public service.
So, once that emergency contacted within your system itself, at the end of the day, do you feel as if it was handled properly to be able to mitigate that problem for the residents of the city of Charleston?
Yeah, the second that we became aware that there was an issue, the water was shut off. Unfortunately, at that point, the amount of chemicals that had gotten into the water stream were enough that it took a while to kind of get that all flushed out. Again, it was a very frustrating situation because it was something that we were sort of at the mercy of what was getting put into our water source because it was again, nothing that anyone would think to test for because we didn't know that what was in that tank or that there was a potential for that to occur, so. But yeah, I mean, we take a lot of pride in our water and the source water protection we provide going forward and that's certainly something that we've been proud of, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question for Anthony. I know several years ago, legislation was passed that it kind of took the PS or the Public Service District or the commission out of the rate increases and kind of put it to us, is that correct? That we could approve, modify, or deny any rate increases, was that...
Yes.
What he's talking about is any increases in the payer fees for the water department, sewer department have to come in front of the council now and be approved in order for them to do that?
And my understanding is you would be taken out of it.
Then it's regulated by the Public Service Commission, these guys are, they're a for-profit company.
We have a couple gentlemen here from the Water and Sewer Department.
Yeah, I think I spoke with Greg.
Greg, Greg here?
Hey Greg, how are you? Good to meet you first, Greg and I spoke on the phone.
Yep, been kind of in touch with Ethan, because it's a little different animal here in Burke County, you know, when it comes to the, we appoint board members, but as far as they're more of a standalone entity, I think they are compared to, you know, under the county's umbrella, they're here in the county, but they operate independently. Yeah, I didn't know if they have any questions or concerns or...
I've had some questions for anyone in the county, for sure, yeah.
I'm just here to listen, just like everybody else is. And, you know, I'm only one board member, I do happen to be on both the Water and Sewer District boards. I would remind everybody, Burke County has three public service districts in Burke County and the other being Stormwater District, can imagine getting rid of two of them without getting rid of that. A testament to the fact that currently, right now, the Sewer District currently holds the MS four permit for Burke County, having successfully got that transferred to the District. I don't, it's hard for me to comment, I mean, I, today, I think, obviously, I do believe, I think legislation would say that the utility boards do have a part in this decision, I think they would have to adopt some type of resolution to do that. It's hard for me to comprehend, both of these sewer districts have access to national capital markets, borrow all our money tax-free, we're not borrowing from the state of West Virginia, we're not borrowing from the West Virginia Development Authority. For example, the Water District has about seventy-four point five million dollars worth of tax-free bonds, the Sewer District has about a hundred and twenty-five million dollars currently outstanding with tax exempt bonds, those would all have to be refinanced. And while, you know, I can't argue whether their operating costs might be lower than ours, they may be, but certainly I would suspect that their financial costs would be higher than ours because they can't borrow a tax-free debt and a testament to the fact, even if they use equity, equity requires something like a return as well. So, it's hard for me to get those, you know, kind of mechanics going in my head. My one concern would be, a big concern would be, and I think Eddie and Mr. Hornhorn kind of hit upon up here, and, you know, we do have a situation where the rest of the state is declining a lot, which we're the only area in Burke County that's growing or in the state of West Virginia that's growing, in fact, with the fastest growing state in West Virginia. And all of the issues that we have as far as growth goes and trying to accommodate growth, both of these utility districts have significant sums to spend over the next five to ten years to accommodate the growth up here, that's right here in Burke County. In spite of all those situations, I'd rather be on that side other than be in a situation where I've got a system, I've got to maintain it, I've got fewer and fewer uses, the fixed costs keep going up and cause adverse impacts on rates. So, what I would be trying to think in my mind is, much like we feel about a lot of things that happen in West Virginia, is that the growth in the Burke County is used to dilute the impacts of things happening elsewhere in the state not necessarily benefit us locally. But that's just off the top of my head observation. I will admit, there is some issues, apparently mentioned about public-private partnerships, I've not investigated those well, I don't know if there's any opportunities there or not, but, you know, I really don't have a lot to comment other than...
Thanks for your comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that, it's really great. Yeah, a couple things you touched on, one, there's a lot of things we don't know at this point, you know, that's kind of, I always characterize this as sort of an exploratory conversation, just kind of putting it on radar, letting people know that it's something that we can talk about further and kind of look into what those details are being, get to the point where we've got some answers and have an understanding of what those type of things look like. The other point you made Greg, I'd like to just comment on as well with regards to, I think, doing work maybe in another part of the state and then Berkeley having to be contributing to that from, or vice versa. The flip side of that is, we also have the ability, if we have to do a big project in Berkeley and spend a bunch of money here, that cost doesn't just get borne by the customers here, it gets spread out over a five hundred fifty thousand customers, so instead of a rate increase, it could be significant, it could be a dependence per customer. So, that's one of the benefits too of having a bigger customer base is the ability to kind of do some of those things without a big impact locally. Two slides of the same coin there.
I think it absolutely makes sense for you guys to be able to acquire troubled systems because, you know, there's obviously a need for that if a system, if a system is failing and needs some help. I think everybody on a system like that can understand to get higher rates, but I don't know that the taxpayers of our county would be very happy to see us switch...
know that the taxpayers of our county would be very happy to see us switch to a water service that was going to charge higher rates at this point, especially as, as well as our Water and Sewer Department do with maintaining the Water and Sewer Department and doing what they're doing and, you know, their outlook for extended plans on improving it. So, yeah, I mean, I get what you guys are doing, I really don't see how it fits in Berkeley County myself.
Sure, yeah, and that's, I think it may not, the timing might not be right, timing may never be right, it may be something that circles back in a couple of years, it may be something you want to think about in a few months, maybe something you want to think about tomorrow. We're here and happy and kind of wanted to just let you know that we're happy to go through that process, there's no cost, no commitment to the folks of Berkeley County, all we would need would be some information sharing, we typically will sign, you know, nondisclosure and confidentiality agreements to keep those things quiet, and then we look through and kind of do some engineering reports, do some operation reports, do some financial analysis, and over the course of a few months, we'd be able to come back and say, hey, this is, here's a number, here's an offer of what we would, what we would offer, and then that's, everything about that is negotiable. So, any way you want to structure what kind of commitment we would be making to the Eastern Panhandle and to Berkeley County, we'd be happy to have those discussions at any point. So, it's a lengthy process typically, especially for something of this size, going through just the research process alone is certainly probably three to four months, we would probably, from the West Virginia and from the corporate team, we would probably station, I would say probably at least 10 to 20 folks here for the duration of that time period, just to kind of work through all that information, get that done rapidly. And then it has to go to the PSC for approval, so that's another typically six to eight month process before they approve, and then there's a bit of a process here as far as kind of making the actual trade decision. So, it's a year to two years at best, start to finish. So, again, just wanted to put something out there to think about, it may not, again, the time might not be today, but it may be someday down the road where you want to think a little bit long-term about what growth is going to look like and maybe that's an option that is helpful for Berkeley's growth, maybe not, but again, wanted to be here and kind of talk through that and let folks know that that's an opportunity.
Yeah, it's a whole different outlook on our utilities and, you know, these utilities, because I do have some age on them, I've seen them grow over a period of time, you know, areas that did not have public water that are now have been, they have a track record. Our public service districts have a very favorable track record actually, and, you know, for you to come and want to take a look at them, I think it's a good indication to them, you know, they've done a fairly good job. What we have to be able to look at is not just today, but our ratepayers, our taxpayers down the road, you know, where they're going to be sitting, you know, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the road, we've got to make sure they're taken care of efficiently in the most financially responsible way.
Absolutely, yeah. Like I said, you know, we're happy to have that and it's, I think to the county's benefit to at least have the information, if you ever want to kind of walk through that exercise, again, it's probably a three to four month time commitment, most of that's on our end after the initial information gathering phase is done. Just to have that and say, okay, this is, if we ever wanted to sell, this is kind of what we could do and here's what that would look like, so, just something to think of.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any thoughts on any of that, we'd be happy to talk to a bull in the face.
I'm good.
I'm pretty good.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all, we appreciate the time for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is possible executive session for county personnel, real estate acquisition, legal matters, and economic development.
There is no need today, I'm not...
No need today, so we have a motion to recess until...
Don't you need to...
Items from the public.
Item, oh yeah, items from the public. Nope?
Hmm.
Mr. Hornhardt?
Well then, I guess I'll make a motion to recess.
We are recessed.